Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to Lakewood City Council's study session agenda for this Tuesday, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. We have a singular item for discussion tonight, and that is the city council retreat follow up. And so for this, we'll have the city manager and Mr. Vargas kind of give us a start, and we'll launch into the discussion.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. It's a pleasure to be here. Uh, before I start off, uh, to my left, to your right is Michael Pendleton, who's our facilitator, and he was here as part of your, of course, leading your uh, March twentieth retreat. And then on my right, your left is our assistant to the city manager, policy analyst, Michael Vargas, who's been working with the department directors to um, follow up on your retreat on the thirtieth and help prepare the material that's presented to you um, here this evening. So your packet is comprised of three components. Just real quick. The first is, uh, there's a two-page cover memo, uh, followed by a um, four-page uh, draft proposed goals for twenty five, twenty six. And then the last component of the packet is the follow-up summary notes, if you will, from your March uh, thirtieth um, retreat that um, that uh, Mr. Pendleton pulled together. Um, and again, that's just more for your information, uh, just memorializing um, that, that, that material. So um, um, after your retreat, what we did is we went back and um, you had identified sixteen goals, and you had gone through a prioritization process, and they had actually been scored. Um, in the end, uh, really, there was eight that we felt rose to the top, and those are presented um, here um, in that cover memo on pages one and two. For you this evening, we then took those eight and transitioned them into four identifiable goals. And um, you can see the retreat priorities for um, you can see um, items one, two, four, and five. Um, really all translated into a downtown park and multi-generational, multi-generational community center or the development thereof. Um, the second um, uh, goal is in the area of public safety, and Lakewood be in a safe community. And then the third goal was Edgewater uh, master plan. And then the fourth goal was a combination of the two last highest priorities, which really focused on economic development, specifically the downtown and the Lakewood Station sub areas as it relates to revitalization and sustainable growth in, in, in both of, in both of those districts. Um, in addition, um, one of the things that we um, have proposed to include in your preamble is, in addition to those specific goals, you know, not to lose the ongoing commitment that this body has in a number of areas, whether it's financial transparency and reporting, communications, um, uh, DEI, the park improvements, uh, you know, the street improvements, et cetera, and you can see that we have listed those there as well. And while those again are not your priority goals for, that are proposed for twenty five, twenty six, it's again just to show the community that those are still areas that are on your radar, that you're committed to ensuring uh, continue to move forward, and um, there, 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 there are results there. So um, that's uh, kind of what I've got on my end, and then I'd like to turn it over to uh, Michael here on, on, on my left, your right, uh, then to provide some feedback and observations on his end, and then Mayor turn it over to you, and anything we can do to help you as you work through this, this evening would be, you know, whatever we can do to help. And then the goal would be to, after this evening, to get some consensus from council to bring back um, a revised draft goals for your consideration and ultimately adoption at an upcoming regular meeting, or if you want to have another study session, that's certainly your prerogative as well. So, but with that, Michael?
Well, it's good to be back with you again. So um, I had an opportunity to uh, read the material that's in front of you. Actually, I'd like to start with my ride home from our retreat. Um, I, I enjoyed the day. We worked hard, if you recall. Worked with a lot of different wonderful ideas. I was struck with the fact that, that, that some of your highest goals were very similarly situated, and they were distinguished almost in terms of phases, you know, if you do this, 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 and this, and, and so I was curious, and later in talking with John about that, I suggested that it seemed to me, given the scope and the interest and how important those areas were to you, that it looked like one relatively large but sequentially uh, designed goal that would definitely take you forward in a on-the-ground kind of way, which gets me to my, a couple other points I want to make in a second. Um, one of the things I look for is if these goals are real. So if you can actually do them and, and come back to your community in, in a year, five years, however long it takes, and go, we did that. It, which gets to another touchstone for me, and that is, are you going to be able to fund them? And we've had conversations about that, and I'm, I'm sure John will talk more directly about, with you about what that all means and so on. But the best organizations do that, and, and then they accomplish them. I'm also mindful of your commitment to basic services and, and public safety. Um, I'm very aware of the history in the city and your commitment, longstanding commitment for ongoing and, and punctuated by real reasons. So it was interesting to me to see a new era represented in your goals. So you're going here, but anchored very firmly in some things that, that are important to you, and you're not, haven't lost sight of. Which gets me to the next point, which is, goals have two important, uh, I think, purposes. One is they should drive a work plan. They should drive your budget and outcomes. But they also have expressive values that communicate to your community and, and to you. This is what we're going to do and, and when we think we're going to do it, and about how much we think it's, it's going to cost. And be, because your resources are, are not unlimited, it also tells people what you're not going to be doing. Because you're going to be doing this, therefore not that, and, and, and that's just the life as we know it in, in our communities. So um, uh, so I look at, 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 at all this, uh, as it's before me now, and I'm, uh, you know, just from the standpoint of watching good organizations, great organizations, set their direction, fund it, and create outcomes. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm very, I guess, happy for you that, that, that this goal profile seems to reflect your interest and kind of touches all of those things, if you will. Um, I think the wordsmithing of goals is really something we did not try to do as a group. That's always, that's always a challenge, as you know, but I assume at some point, these will be ratified or approved and, and adopted, if you will, in some process. So I would urge you tonight to take a look at the materials in front of you. If there's something you have a question about, if you have concerns about, or want to have a further discussion about, I would encourage that. Because in the process, it, it seems to me that you're moving forward to adoption, and this should drive budgets, work plans, and, and a, a lot of what you do going forward. So, um, with that, I guess I'd turn it back to you, uh, Jason, and you can.
Well, thank you both very much. Uh, and I'm going to open up for general conversation on this. Um, I think it's a good recap of the city council retreat for sure. Um, but how we wordsmith, if you will, and tweak the proposed goals does exactly as you suggested. It communicates to the community and certainly to the executive team and the manager, the work plan. And so it, it's really important to kind of maybe take a little bit of a step back tonight and kind of dig into this and, and figure out if exactly this is the tone and tenor of what we mean and how we want to articulate it to the community as the, I guess, the two-year, really, the two to six-year, I guess, work plan for the manager and his staff. So with that, I've got a couple of thoughts, but I'll open up to the council. I, you know, just kind of a thought conversation starter. I'll throw it out there. Um, looking at the consistent retreat priorities that were then merged into proposed goal number one, downtown park and the multi-generational community center development. Seems to me, at least in my mind, what I'm trying to articulate is, I, I think Lakewood at this point in its lifespan really needs an identifiable downtown gathering space. And so that's why we kind of came up with the park as part of that, but it's, it's larger than that. And we've got the city hall, we've got the Broken Fountain, uh, you know, we've, we've got the main street, but we, we don't really yet have that very well-developed identifiable downtown sense of place. I, I think we're going to get there a little bit more with the housing project. If it comes to fruition, that's going to be helpful, in my opinion, uh, in the back forty, uh, behind the Barnes Noble. Um, I, I do think that the activities that we've held downtown have been great. I do think that the Colonial Plaza development that we did is great. I do think that the potential impending acquisition of land over by the QFC will add to that. But I think the step back to me is the umbrella overview of creating a vibrant sense of place and a downtown Lakewood, to me. So this is a component of that, but thoughts, Mr. Brand Center?
Yeah, same, Mr. Mayor. Certainly with respect to the iterated first goal regarding a downtown park, but also the associated amenities that might be a part of that, that um, and, you know, I, I'd sort of like to make sure that, that that goal includes um, building out the Green Street Loop. It includes the uh, the getting to the multi-general generational community center. Uh, it includes uh, spaces that can, where, where there can be gatherings of multiple sorts to be able to go and do that. And that, and that um, and that we, that, that we iterate that the purpose for doing that and, and, and exploring and doing those things as they become feasible. Because there's all these sorts of things, but we can't really totally predict the order that, that, that they are intended amongst the other things that are there. They are um, focused as a, not just in terms of getting an identity, but also as a catalyst for the success of the downtown plan. And when they're catalyst for housing and jobs and other things to locate in the downtown, which has been the you, 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 research would tell you that in, investing in park-type things cause other things to occur nearby. Um, and so I'd like to be able to say that that's the point, not necessarily to say a um, I wouldn't necessarily want to just say that we'll have a downtown park. Let's say we will have downtown parks and open spaces. Okay, and uh, within, in, in a community center, all those things that fall under the parks and recreation piece to be able to go and do that. We talked a lot about catalyst things in previous sessions about planning to do that, and we, we kind of thought the library would be that, and it's not going to be. It's, it's not going to work out that way. Um, but, so we, we need, but as we have done, you know, use Woodbrook as an example. Okay, where you did the things that were going to be a catalyst for the development that you eventually wanted. In Woodbrook, it was streets and sewers, utility, utility services, being able to go and do that along with some land use planning that had to do with the uh, the closure of the middle school and, and making that land available and, and other things to do that. So I think that, that our, our goal here is not so narrow as let's get a park, but let's do the things that deal with parks plural and open spaces in the downtown that will do things that you mentioned, but it will also be a catalyst for the success of the goals of the, of, of, of the downtown plan. And so I'd like to see it kind of get worded that way, you know, and one of the problems with these projects is when they require you to get land, and they require you to get permitted and things, it's difficult this far in advance to specifically sequence them of saying, do this one first, and that one first, and that one first, and that one first, you, you and which ones you can get funding. But, but, but the, the plan should be to move forward with its complete package of parks and open spaces in the downtown. And that would, that would, that would be my goal, that we make progress on that in the next two years. Uh, and word it that way.
So akin to what I described as kind of, you know, the accessible, vibrant downtown that has opportunities for housing, parks, open space, and employment, or whatever. Something to that effect.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think that the, the problem is, is that the parks and streets are the two things we can control, and those are the things that we can set on the table. Um, and, 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 and we, and we should say we're going to focus on that. And we have I guess I'll say candidly, we got distracted from the downtown by Lakewood Landing and the concept of Lakewood Landing. And we need to really now get back to, 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 to saying that we're going to focus on actually making the, the goals in the downtown plan happen.
Very good. Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I appreciate the, the comments about, you know, trying to kind of keep it a, a little bit more general and, and not get so focused on something, on some specific areas, but I do think that, you know, that was kind of part of the, the council retreat really was everyone selecting one, you know, item or three items, or however many we selected, and not one person listed, you know, the Greens Loop. And so adding it now at this time, I mean, I think it's a really important piece to add to the comp plan, but I don't know if it should really be one of our, you know, key, our core four goals. So that's, you know, when we're talking about a core four goals, you know, I think those should be kind of um, narrowed in, in scope a bit, and something that we can, can go do rather than have so many different, you know, tentacles to it that, oh, well, we did kind of part of it, and we did kind of part of this one and part of that one, that we can check a box that we accomplished that goal. We, you know, created a downtown park, or we did the community center, or, 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 you know, whatever the other ones were, but, you know, it's something that we can, that we can um, track ourselves and, and make progress on and, and complete. Um, not something that's going to have so many legs to it that we kind of get a partial completion, I guess, that, you know, so that's just my comment on that. But I do think that that all needs to be in the comp plan. I do think those are important things to have in there, but not part of the goal necessarily.
A fair comment. And then to help push the conversation, let me ask Mr. Coffield a question on this, because we do know that Deputy Mayor, myself, and, and you, Mr. City Manager, went back to DC, and we're pushing pretty hard to get study money for the Green Street Loop, right? We're working hard to get a federal grant on that. You see that as something that's just kind of part of our existing work plan, that, that, that is already kind of part of your focus and goals? It wouldn't be eroded from no articulation of just the downtown park per se, as opposed to the downtown connectivity, parks and open spaces?
Um, affirmative, Mayor. Actually, it's a continuation of your current goals that are in place right now. Also, I would urge caution in making that a goal for twenty five, twenty six, for the simple reason that from a financial standpoint, we're waiting on whether or not we're going to get the Raze Grant this year. Now, if we don't, we're going to come back, and we're going to apply for it again and again and again. So really, until we get that first um, nugget of financing, um, it's really a bit of a, a dream.
Right.
Whereas what you discussed at your retreat, and actually comes from a brand center, I think, really said it quite eloquently, that's something that you have direct control over, which is what's presented here. That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Now, the Green Street Loop, as you said, that's already in the queue. That is already something that's moving forward. If, for example, we get the Raze Grant this June, we'll know by the end of next month. If, for example, we get the RACE grant this June, we'll know by the end of next month whether or not we'll receive that. You know, that's going to take, you know, maybe a year and a half for, you know, that work to occur, because that's a, it's a pretty big lift. As a matter of fact, it it'll get us pretty close to thirty percent design of the green loop. And then once we have that, then we will go back to the federal government again in probably two years from now, or maybe even three years um, to secure the construction funding. So having it as a twenty-five, twenty-six goal, I would just urge caution on that. Because again, it's number one, it's already in the queue, but yeah, as as Michael said earlier, you know, if you ask me, is it achievable? I would say right now, I don't know. It's dependent upon, you know, Congress.
So again, the focus of our work at the retreat and what we're trying to embody now is really the twenty-five, twenty-six achievable goals we can sink our teeth into and get done, funded and done. Mr. Bokey.
Mr. Loorsell. Thank you, Mayor. Quick question on the Green Street Loop. Do we look at the Green Street Loop as a park project or a road, a transportation project?
Um, it's primarily a um, road, it's primarily a multimodal improvement project to encourage more non-motorized movement within the downtown with a particular focus on pedestrians and bicycles and things along those lines. But then also adding some greenery life to it. But first and foremost, it is a non-motorized project.
But the the idea behind the RACE grant then is to help create the planning base to this thing, so we can figure out and then we can go out try to get federal money, try to get state money, because there are state sources to this too for non-motorized.
Potentially, um, I would say if we get the RACE grant, which is federal, um, I think we're in a very good position to be able to apply for federal RACE construction dollars alone. Um, without having, quite frankly, to involve the state, because the state, they have different priorities. And and by the way, that's not to say that we wouldn't be able to go after non-motorized state fundings, but given the size and scope of this project, the the state monies would be a very, 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 I'm not even going to say small amount, I would say tiny amount. Because this is potentially going to be a twenty-five or a thirty million dollar improvement.
Okay. Along with our park. I'll just dovetail on and I'll try to play the role of, um, uh, you know, agreeing with everybody. I I I I do think the ultimate goal is a vibrant downtown and and I and I do think creating a sense of place. At times, I feel like we're getting there and then it hasn't really happened, you know, I I feel positive some days, other days, I'm kind of like, this isn't happening. Um, I think we, I know we had hoped that the, um, Colonial Street Center Plaza would create a, would would be a catalyst project, and to date, it hasn't turned out that way, but we're looking at other things. I agree with the mayor that we have to have some sort of flexibility as to what it may, you know, what what downtown parks, open spaces, how do you want to create that? Um, do you put a fountain on one corner and do things like that, right? And then, but I also agree that we we really need, when the comp plan comes our way, we really need to dial in in our comp plan. And I know we have a, the, you know, the sub-area plan in there, but we really need to look at that language and say, is is that word vibrant? Is that, are the, are are those those key words, those magic words in there? And and are they related to to our satisfaction? Are we, that that's our chance to really envision and let the world know this is our vision and this is where we're going in that. We we already have the downtown plan that says there's going to be eighteen thousand people. We're hoping for eighteen thousand jobs. But what is the, are we just saying, hey, if we catch what catch can, and we're going to say no, we're not catching while catch can, the, we have a plan here and the plan is to make this a downtown. And and really work to to produce that. Now, a lot of questions can come out of that, right? I mean, I could start saying, what does that mean? How do we make sure small business is a part of this? Um, how do you do this in kind of a, in in our current kind of fractured uh, ownership environment that we have in the area? I think we can pull it off. And I, but I, but I agree with Councilmember Pearson that we we really do need to make sure that we're putting the magic words into the comp plan and that we understand. So that people see that and say, okay, their emphasis is is this. And I think we'll be happy with that going forward. And that'll really help us, um, when, you know, as we start to to get into the details of it.
Agreed. I think we have to have the puzzle before we pick off these pieces of the puzzle, right?
Thank you. Uh, I'm just going to sort of pile on to what everyone else is saying in that, uh, I think we got it right, that this is priority one on our list, and I think I agree with what you said, Mr. Mayor, about Lakewood's identity being tied to a space like this uh, and how we can define what people think of when they think of Lakewood going forward. This downtown core is a center for housing as more things come in, for transportation. It's got one of the largest transportation hubs for Pierce Transit, right? Uh, for commerce, as people come in here to to do their shopping and as we build it out for recreation, right? Um, you get those four things together, you fund them through things like tax increment financing that we've established. Uh, and that gives us the opportunity to set that identity going forward. So I I appreciate that this turned out to be number one on our list and, uh, I think it, we got it right, and so we just got to make it happen.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm I'm, I might be kind of off track, but does the language in our comp plan allow us to pull in some of the dream things that we have for our downtown area? In other words, if if we are working with our comp plan and something, we see an opportunity to add something else into that, does our language allow that to happen?
I would say probably, but Mr. Vargas is going to be working with Tiffany, I assume, and helping us tweak that when we get to that portion of it.
The short answer, Deputy Mayor is is yes. Yes, there's always that ability. And and if not, uh, that's why we go through an annual update to the comp plan. The comp plan can always be can always be changed, but I would say based on this council and where your priorities are and your vision, I I would, I would say at this point in time, yes. But if not, it can be changed.
Yeah, because I, the whole conversation, I agree with what has been said, but my mind keeps saying this would lead to this and this will lead to that. And so if our comp plan is to the point that we can do that, I think we have some opportunities there. That's just my thought, but I I like the conversations.
Seems to me what I'm kind of hearing, we're all saying essentially the same thing. Uh, maybe we have this focus for the goals for twenty-five, twenty-six. But I I think we all agree and I think the comp plan speaks to that, that, you know, the Lakewood council's vision for the city of Lakewood is to have a vibrant downtown that's a center for housing, uh, transportation, employment opportunities, as well as recreational, you know, plethora of recreational opportunities. And so that's kind of the overall vision. And then the goal for twenty-five, twenty-six is to actually make some of that happen, right? And the acquisition of the downtown park property and the planning for it and hopefully the construction of it uh, would be an achievable portion or goal of that vision. Is that a fair way to put it?
So yes, I would even say that your goal is what you want to accomplish and your budget document is how that's going to be accomplished.
Within the vision that we've articulated.
Within the vision of your comprehensive plan. And I would just also add, Deputy Mayor, that these goals that are presented are consistent with your current comp plan and what's being moved forward through the planning commission as well.
I, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I envision as we progress through this project, that we can include a senior center, senior center as well as, uh, perhaps someplace where youth that are complaining constantly, they have no gathering spots. That's what I was envisioning.
And that's what I think this proposed goal number one says. It's the downtown park and the multi-generational community center development. So I I think we're there with that language.
Also, in the proposed work plan, their phase two, you'll notice there's a definite community and stakeholder and larger plan for engagement, which I would assume would be linked to your design and going forward, so.
On page, I think you're looking at page four, yeah.
Page, on page four, phase two. Bullet two.
Right.
So pretty early on.
Ah, I see. Got it. So we're getting into the wordsmithing a little bit more, more buoyantly here on page four and nine. I like the language there because it does articulate by the twenty-thirty, Lakewood will boast a private or vibrant, rather, and inclusive downtown park and multi-generation community center.
Mayor, I would have one suggestion is that, um,
I like that.
And we have it elsewhere, but maybe put a parentheses S next to park, because it could be multiple parks. And we we have that down under phase one, under, you know, where it says urban parks. I think that should be, I should, that that should be, in my opinion, that should be consistent throughout this, including as the goal, downtown parks.
Yeah, maybe eliminate the word A, will boast vibrant and inclusive downtown parks. Opposed to a vibrant, yep. Mm-hmm. Yeah. That makes sense. So looking at page four, folks, if we can take a look at that. Did you have a comment, Mr. Brand Center, on page?
I would just want to say that to the, to the, I agree with that as it's part of the work plan. It's just that for consistency, we should use the term parks with a park apostrophe. Yes. Our parks, parenthetical S behind it, as opposed to in some places, say, a park and others use parks. And I think we should use parks because we do want to do multiple um, options of this, um, that feasibility and funding will tell us, will lead us to the sequencing.
Right. I'm just looking, again, going from page four to five. We want to talk anymore about the first one on page four. I think we've discussed that really sufficiently. I think this does articulate our direction, our guidance on that first goal pretty well with the notation of parks and paren- parenthetical S for parks, generating multiple opportunities there. Yeah, parks. My my only tweak that I would love as my magic wand would be to expedite, uh, land acquisition, design permitting and construction, you know, to be done by twenty-twenty-six, but you know, that's that can be part of the city manager's work plan. Exactly, and we can always get a home run. It would be nice to expedite, but I know those are more realistic dates, so. If it happens sooner, then we can always say, hey, hallelujah, right? Yeah. Yeah, public safety. Let's let's kind of move to, uh, item two or goal two, public safety, just recognizing that, uh, it is an ongoing goal uh, to ensure that Lakewood's a safe community, not only in reality, but in perception, because perception has tended to be the reality in many ways. Uh, but we have made great strides forward. So let's take a look on page five, just the public safety articulated goal and then the bullet points there for a moment. I think the articulated goal looks good. Did you have a comment, Mr. Brand Center? And Mr. Bokey?
I I certainly agree with the goal statement. They claim with one of the safest communities in Washington. Biennium of that. The the bullet points, though, um, I'm not sure that I would want to, within our goals, specify all of these things, because they're, for the most part, they're strategies. And their strategies that the the city manager and the police chief and then the the and the any other parts of the city staff that have to do with public safety have to look to make happen. And the truth is, is that almost all of those bullet points aren't specifically definable by a metric that relates back to is Lakewood one of the safest communities. You know, so, you know, I'd like to see, um, that list be shorter, maybe, but with a clear guidance to say that we're going to work on that, but that we are not trying to micromanage exactly how the city manager and the chief move forward in doing that. So I think that some of these can be taken out or some of these maybe can have a piece to do that. I might like to see somehow for us define safe community, what metrics we use to define safe community. In other words, do we want to be in the eightieth percentile or above with respect to crime rates? Meaning having lowest crime rates. That to be able to go and do that or something like that, because that that I think that does give uh, the 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 city manager and the police chief and staff, uh, you know, something to move towards to make sure that what, whatever strategies they include, whether on this list or their new ones, like the like we've seen the impact of the, of 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 the cameras that 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 we've had, that seems to be one of the reasons for the catalyst and the recent change in certain crime rate. But we should, safest is an should, we should define that in our goal and say, we're working towards being in the top. Again, I say eightieth percentile, top twenty percent, you you know. It's not reasonable to have a goal to be the absolute safest community in Washington. I mean, maybe we have some realities that are not going to allow us to do that. Number one, I five, I I five works against becoming one of the safest or or the actual safest community uh, in in Washington to do that. Uh, and two, the fact that we're we're set into a we're we're a satellite in the in the in the Tacoma metropolitan area and that. So that that means, oh, we're different than Squim or someplace else that 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 can aspire to that. Um, and maybe, maybe, maybe our safest, uh, uh, metric, whatever we decide we want to define in the goal is 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 maybe not just in Washington, but it's amongst mid-sized cities in Washington. Uh, in in other words, we 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 sort of want to be safer than federal way, okay? Uh, it's safe to do that, but we're not necessarily trying to to match every small town out there that 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 has a crime every once in a while and that doesn't even have a, have a police department. So I I I I think the wordsmithing of this should be to to let's define the goal of of safest in a way that's that's measurable and that as we move through the next biennium, bienniums, we can see, are we getting there? And maybe I'll just choose a metric and then take a look at where are we at with respect to it right now. Um, you know, you know, we 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 may be, uh, there's maybe some good news in 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 terms of of looking at that, if you define what you're going to look for.
What would be the metric, Mr. Caulfield, that might satisfy that, that we could put in the goal?
Sorry, man, did you say a new goal or to define the metric?
Just to define a metric within the stated goal, I think, is there something we can? Use or point to that's, that's generally accepted?
I think we would have to look into that, Mayor, and do some research on that, I'm sure, I'm sure the answer is yes.
And, and I would just make one more comment about the public safety goal. I, I would somewhere like to add into that. Because of, you know. Whenever we sort of look at things, we're looking at that and, and quite honestly, there are concerns about how well and efficiently. Our municipal court is serving public safety here in the community. And so I would, whether it's. If there's going to be some bullet points under, on the work plan. I, I, I would consider saying evaluate and if feasible, transition the municipal court from in-house to a contracted service. I think that's a, that's, that's a process we should go to and if it's feasible implement during this next two-year biennium.
That might be a strategy, right?
Yeah, I would say that, that down, not necessarily stated in the, in the goal itself, but. As I, as I shorten this list of strategies to, to not be too, so prescriptive. I would love to include again, and that, that, that evaluate and, 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 and move forward if feasible. On a transition of the municipal court during this next biennium. There's, I think there's, there's, there's fiscal reasons for doing that, there's public safety reasons for doing that. And again, it all comes down to you got to. But I think and evaluate and then doing something if it's feasible is doable within a two-year window.
Okay, I think Mr. Coffield had a comment there.
I think that would be a, a good approach, you know, that's something that is, 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 is underway and is a key element, probably going to be a key element of the twenty-five. Twenty-six biennial budget and I know we've had conversations about it, but having it memorialized here. I, I, I would, as your city manager, would wholeheartedly support. I think, you know, the other thing too is going back to Councilmember Brandstetter's statement about some of these things. That are listed here, you know, we can go back and talk with the chief about, okay, what are the metrics on? On, on these items.
Yeah, that would be helpful to give a little tease to it.
That's correct, and, and, and if you want to shorten the list too, we can, we can. Do that because there's, there's quite a few in here that actually focus on. Community involvement and community outreach and, you know, we have new leadership, I mean, the chief's been here a little over a year now. And so, you know, in conversations with him, you know, this is something that he is beginning to drive as well. So having that come from the council is how this ended up here, based on, you know, what we've heard from the council in the past. And, and I would say also that. You know, and, and again, we can get back to you on what the metrics are, but like, for example, the first one, ensure the police department is fully staffed, well, there's a metric there. And then equipped with the latest technology and resources and you've seen recently, you've seen some tremendous metrics on that where we brought in technology. And not only what the technology is driven, but what the results have been in terms of our crime stats as well, so, but we can get back to you on that.
So thinking through that, and I don't, I don't mean to keep interjecting, but if, if we're looking at the bullet points, there's more action strategies. That the, the manager and staff articulate to inform us how they're going to execute and achieve the policy goal, that would be great. So I might, in the city council goal in that first paragraph, suggest we maybe add a couple of words, so this is what I would add. So where it says, continue to make Lakewood one of the safest, whatever communities, are we going to define that with a metric? By implementing comprehensive public safety strategies, fostering community partnerships and investing in. I might add personnel and resources. Because resources might mean technology, they don't necessarily mean people, but if you add personnel, then it helps drive. One of the strategies to ensure that the department's fully staffed, blah, 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 so you might add that. And it goes on to say that support crime prevention comma, I might add the word accountability comma. Emergency response and community wellbeing accountability then goes to the nature of. It's great to support crime prevention, but once we have folks who are in the system. Are we holding them accountable? Is our municipal court effective in doing so? How do we measure that, right? The public wants to know. Uh, and so I think adding the word accountability in there might be helpful, again. My thought, I open it for discussion on those minor tweaks, Mr. LaRocella.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I like what you said there about investing in personnel and resources. I think I would say investing in people instead of personnel, because it makes it more. More personal for folks. I also agree with what Mr. Brandstetter said, I mean, these fourteen bullet points are a lot, I would. I, I know in our first goal, we really got into the details of, of the how, but in this one, I think it makes sense to take a step back and have higher level strategies. Instead of these lower level tactics that get us there. As well as, I think we should definitely talk to Chief Smith and get his feedback on. How he would want to accomplish the goal that we set above and how to. Put that into the strategies, there's some collaboration there, I think as we define metrics. It makes sense to look at similar sized municipalities, but we also want to make sure we're measuring performance relative to ourselves, we're making continuous improvement year to year.
Mr. Bokey?
Yeah, I, I agree, the, the one thing that I looked at. My comment on this when I first looked at it was, there's fourteen bullet points here and that's way, way too many. And so, um, in my mind, it was way too many and so. The, and there are some I thought could be. Combined to, to lower it. I'm also in agreement on the metrics because saying the safest, I'll tell you right now, will never come close, right? I mean, when I look at the Wall Street numbers that come out every year, we're over a hundred, we're can always over a hundred. Crimes per, per thousand, I think. I mean, we have surrounding cities that are half that, I, I, I mean, I mean. I don't know what our ex, I mean, I guess if I was the chief, I'd go, what are your expectations here, right? You, you want us to be due on? I, I mean, it just is, is unrealistic, I believe it's not realistic expectation. So I think finding. Five or ten peers and, and trying to figure out how we want to do that in some way. Or look at the statewide averages or something like that, because trying to compare yourself. To, to small cities that don't have any crime. That, you, you, you know, there are, I mean, even if we, even if we do it, we'll be comparing, if we just did it by population. Includes some Amish and they, you, you know, a couple of years ago, they had a murder and all hell broke loose, right? I mean. Very difficult comparisons for, for us, so I, I do appreciate that. Within this, there seems to be more emphasis on community policing, which is something that we have not always discussed. We, we, we tend, and, and Mr. Brandstetter knows more about this, that, that, the, the department was constructed. More on a, seems to be a task force kind of regional basis almost. And so I, I really do appreciate that there. More emphasis on neighborhood patrols to enhance visibility and response. You know, then the community partnership items and, and then. Effectiveness of measures through regular evaluation feedback, which would be up to the department and how they want to handle that. So I, I do think that there's some really important things in here, I think it's. I think say, one of the safest puts our, our, our officers in a really difficult position. And also, I think it's, I think there's just too many things to, for, for us to follow and for them.
Sure. Let me offer some reference points from outside and. On the bullets, typically those are strategies that have, and, and for most of your goals frankly. That really signal to you, this is the, these are the approaches that we think we're going to take and so on and. The outside references that, so you wouldn't be surprised and or would expect to see some sort of. Budget that reflects some of these strategies, but for you, because these are operational. In most city manager form of government, you stop right at the goal and then the strategies come in. But it's, it's a nice heads up, this is where we would go and begin to look at some stuff that would then be. Perhaps reflected in, in your budget. On metrics, having spent ten years at the University of Washington, in my role there in criminal justice, specifically policing. That's a slippery slope, that's a place where you want to do a number of things that have been suggested here. But the referencing to comparisons and all of that. And all that goes into that, I think, is something that needs to be, I would really urge the chief to be heavily involved in that. And as he would be, but that's, that's not a settled area of, of. Statistics, if you will. And you're already starting to, to, to sense that, you know, where you live, close to a major metropolitan area. I mean, there's just a number of factors that create an idiosyncratic aspect to this. Which is why benching to prior, whatever is, is important, but that, that becomes something you want to, I think, spend some time being cautious about. Because of, of apples and oranges, things that can happen to you. And also, and this is probably one of the more interesting things about this discussion for me, because your focus is on police primarily as I hear it. However, the point about the courts and the understanding that the linkage to a concept called safest community. Isn't just in the purview of the police and, and, and so. My state patrol friends are quick to tell me how quick folks get arrested or what have you and then return instantly to the community. So it's a broader set of considerations and I was. It was interesting to me that you would then quickly move over, well, the courts have a role in this too and, and, and someone else, so. It's, it's a hugely important area, I just think that the, once, once you drop below that general goal statement, there are some. Things that you want to really focus in on and I would urge get some good, solid, on the ground advice as to how you, how you'd index that.
Well, it does, I, I think we're all trying to get to the same point, which is how do we define success at the end of the day, right? With this goal, how are we going to say, you know, we met it, we met the goal?
I, I, let's give me, I just give you an example. Of what happens when you're, when we're pulling data from a number of different sources. We do research and, and so pull out data on how safe people feel. And the population that feels most at risk tends to be elderly. They're, they've, they've come way up high, but objectively, they're the least victimized population in your community. So there's this distortion effect that occurs for a number of reasons, as books have been written about, but, but so. And all of a sudden, you have to start kind of realizing what you're measuring, I guess, and that challenge, so.
Mr. Pearson and then Mr. Brandstetter, one of us will need to turn off. This is feedback, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, so one of my, you know, when we talk about make, continue to make Lakewood. One of the safest communities and what, you know, what is? What are we doing when we're making it the, the, one of the safest communities, well, you're, you know, one of the items is that you're reducing crime. And so, instead of, I guess, saying safest communities, we could just kind of take out some of the guessing work about who we're comparing ourselves to. And just say, you know, continue to reduce crime in Lakewood. And we get quarterly reports and as long as there's negatives every quarter. You know, we've got a long ways to go, but, you know, I think that we're making progress, you know, so. I don't know if that would, would help kind of take out some of the comparing apples and oranges and, and that. And trying to find the right communities to compare to and, and that's a really weird, you know. Okay, yeah, let's, let's pick, you know, some other high crime kind of mid-sized cities like Kent and Federal Way and all these. It's like, okay, well, are we really, you know, and now we're just choosing to run in the slow heat, that's, you know. I don't, I don't really like that mentality and so. But at least if we're comparing, you know, ourselves to ourself, we know that we're getting better. Regardless of what's going on, you know, out in the, out, out in these other areas. And, you know. Overall, comparing ourselves to the county and the state and stuff, but I, I think that that would, you know, maybe help. Kind of clarify where we're, we're trying to go here, so.
Sure, Mr. LaRocella.
Just one last comment, I, I appreciate what the facilitator as well as Mr. Brandstetter said about. The courts being a part of this, I think we don't want to lose sight that it's, safety is a number of things, it's our police, it's our courts. It's our social services. Some of the last bullets in here reference mental health services, substance abuse programs, social support networks, that sort of thing. I want to make sure we maintain that as we go forward and, and keep that sort of broad perspective, so, thank you.
Agreed, I think that's hopefully subsumed in community wellbeing as well as crime prevention in many ways, yep. Mr. Brandstetter, you have one more?
Yeah, and, and I would just say that in response to Mr. Pearson's comment, I think that a. A, a metric that's defined by measuring change. Is as good a metric as, as a comparative metric with. With other folks, it's just a question of what, how do we want to run it, but we can say that. You, you know, that, 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 that we want to do that and that we want to see. Data reflecting the community becoming safer, that, 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 that's as good a metric as, as. As, as saying is federal way doing better than us, okay? And again, going back to my other comment. I also appreciate the comment and, and, and believe that, 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 that public safety. Is a, is, 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 is a much bigger umbrella than the police department. You know. So, so while I am not looking to add to this list, I'm looking to shorten this list of strategies. You know, I would say that there are. A couple of important strategies that we should really try to make. Of progress on in the, in the next two years. One is, is that we should. Maintain and, 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 and the, the, the. The rental housing safety program, which is really a safety. Program. The other is during these two years, we're going to. Need to come, come to some idea around our strategies to deal with the problems of opioids and fentanyl. That are, that are things that are not necessarily going to be to do that. And the last thing, although I'm. Not sure that I want to put it on here because I don't know exactly how we're going to be able to go and do that is that. We somehow have to do a better way of, of getting to emergency shelter services. Now, we, 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 we don't know what's going to happen with the Pierce County Village, the, the examiner is gonna. Either give that a go ahead or. Kill it or. Do something in the middle that's going to cause it to have to be more work, I, 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 I don't know. But I, I, I think that it all comes back to how big of an umbrella do we want to put over the term public safety? To, to be able to say to do that, if we put too big of an umbrella and, and, and there are lots of things that go with. Into public safety, then we, as you can get into. Transportation and, and other things, you know, then it, it's, it's. It almost becomes a goal that looks like transparency, I mean, it's just, just, just there to be able to go and do that. So I, I, I would look, think this is a good topic for us to discuss. At our next session of, of discussing this, of, of where we're, we're really looking and, and what do we want to tell the community? We're. Including in the public safety umbrella, I think, I think we're thinking more. Expansively than if you said public safety to, to the general community than what they would think.
I, I do think that the language in the stated goal is sufficiently broad because we're going to. Implement comprehensive public safety strategies, we, we're going to foster community partnerships, we're going to invest in people and resources. And support crime prevention and sort of accountability, so I don't know if that's going to make it through with you people, but. Emergency response and community wellbeing, I think we've got it there. Sufficiently to. Send the message. And then we have the action strategies that will be tweaked appropriately by the manager and the police chief. Are we good with that at this point?
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor, can I just make a couple of comments? So first of all. I really appreciate the discussion on safest communities and the reason being is because that's really been in place since. And the reason being is because that's really been in place since I've been here, maybe even prior to me arriving as a, as, as a goal. So, um, seeing a focus, and I do appreciate Councilmember Pearson's focus on reducing crime, because that's really what we're doing. You know, trying to be the safest community in Washington State. There's so many variables there. You know, a term I usually say for the Pewters Sound Regional Council is that, you know, all cities and towns are the same, but really, we're all very, very different and unique. And Lakewood, when it comes to public safety, I would say is even more unique. And the reason being is because here in Lakewood, one of the driving focuses of why we incorporated was because of public safety. Yet to our north, we have a community that has, quite frankly, based on what I understand it to be, a different philosophy on public safety. And I'm not trying, I'm just, that's a fact. That's, 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 you know, and we got data that shows that. And then to the east, you know, we have unincorporated county, which does not have the people and the resources because it's just a different, it's a different model. And it used to be the impacted JBLM, which is no longer a negative or a draw on, on Lakewood. And a lot of those reasons for is because we've cleaned up a lot of the community that at one time back in the day really was there for the military. And then on top of that, because of our relationship with the military, the military does a much, much better job on policing its own. And, and that's, 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 that's a true statement. And then the other I was adding, I know Councilmember Laura Sella and several others mentioned it, is, you know, public safety is not, and Councilmember Branseter, is not just about the Lakewood Police Department and Patrol. You know, it's about, you mentioned the rental housing safety program, which I think after forming our own police department and cityhood, it's probably one of the best things that we ever did. It's about our abatement program. It's about code enforcement. It's about the investments in social and human services. You know, and the opioid.
Lighting in streetscapes and sidewalks.
That's correct. That's correct. And, you know, and some of these, you know, i- items here are meant to try and capture that, like for example, the very last bullet point as an example. So, but let us, we can go back and take this feedback, which I think is really good because I don't think we've had this level of discussion on public safety for a long, long time. And we can definitely rework this.
Maybe even bring the chief and the assistant chief back as part of that study session conversation. I, I would add, because I love to get the last word in. Uh, and the third bullet point where it says monitor the effectiveness of public safety initiatives through regular evaluation and feedback, I might put a comma, including focused community surveys. Because we talk about perception. And if we had a better surveying model just for public safety, you'd get after those seniors who are fearful because of X or maybe Y. We don't know. Without doing an adequate survey on this, what would make you feel safer in your community? If I saw more patrols in my neighborhood, if I could go to safely and feel comfortable, you know, pick something. But that's where we're going to get, I think, the most effective feedback is focused community surveys. Yeah. I see that down below and again, it goes to the fifteen bullet points. If we can tighten up to, you know, something a little less, but I see it down there, the community meetings and surveys. Okay, anything else on this one? Good work. I think that, I think we made good progress on that. Let's go to the third one, the Edgewater Park Master Plan Implementation, which is kind of an interesting standalone goal, but it was one that bubbled to the surface from the retreat. So take a look, folks, at the stated goal and then the phases and then if you have any other conversation points, I think that the stated goal looks good because we passed or adopted the master plan. So now we're basically saying we want to implement the adopted master plan. I think it looks pretty good. Mr. Branseter?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yeah. I'm concerned about this as a standalone goal. Uh, I think that at the timing of our retreat, this was just an issue that was just right staring us in the face and so that it's there, but that it is not the only park that has an untotally fulfilled master plan. We have approved the master plan and it's there. That I think that, you know, uh, we, if we look into the reasons of why Edgewater Park is important, and it is, it's because our real goal or our overarching goal is to to develop and implement the master plans that will increase access to the water features in the city. And we have in the works, even to be done in the, the next biennium, we have a preliminary master plans and plan to implement one of them in the next two years for a street end to create this. We have this master plan. We have ARPA dollars that are going to be spent to create a master plan for the Fish and Wildlife Boat Launch there adjacent to the city at Camp Murray and trying to get the city, if not ownership, operational control of that. And we still have a master plans to complete that involves Wards Lake and American Lake that will, that will, parks that will run into there. So that while I don't, don't know to, 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 to say that this particular park, it elevates above all the rest to be a standalone goal, when the goal is really in the next two years to make progress on Lake Silicon, on Lake Louise, on, on, on Gravelly Lake and on American Lake for, for access through the creation and, and, and implementation of master plans, that that would be a better statement to the community and all and, and all encompassing as opposed to something that this is just too narrow and is not our sole focus because also I'm really concerned about while we're going to make progress on Edgewater Master Plan, nobody is expecting it to be done by 2026. I mean, we expect that maybe by 2026 to be into and know the nuances of the permitting for it, have, have gotten the, have gotten the land, have resolved the, the, the real estate issues, being able to go and do that, and then being in the first of what will be several iterations of funding. That we are, you know, the, where we, where we go with the, getting the one street end in that biennium developed to where is actually usable access. That's out there. We've already committed, again, we've already committed the ARPA dollars to try to work on lake access on American Lake to, to develop a master plan for that. So I think expanding this to talk about the master plans for recreational access to the water in the state is, is really our goal that we want to make progress on in the next two years.
Mr. Pearson?
I concur with Mr. Branseter, hundred percent.
I agree with that too, and, and I'll say why after Mr. Laura Sella has his say there.
Yeah, thanks. I, I agree with it as well, and I think I'd call it our Parks and Lakes Accessibility Master Plan. Because that would encompass all that Mr. Branseter put forth, and I think it takes this up a level to capture sort of the vision that we all have for making things accessible for everyone on our bodies of water and in our parks.
And since we've got these phases and bullet points, one would be the Edgewater Master Plan, one might be Wards Lake, one might be something else. And I completely agree, uh, that we should broaden this one to the goal should be improving access to lakes and waterfront master plans or whatever, we want to articulate that. And one of the poignant things that's in our face this month is the Silicon Bridge. And one of the things that has come to my sort of forefront of thinking after hearing from a lot of neighbors, uh, because I live in the area, is we are doing the Mount Tacoma Project design in twenty-five, construction in twenty-six. Uh, there was a public comment we all received tonight about why don't you think about closing the bridge? And I had other commenters over the weekend say, why don't you think about at least making it one way? Uh, and so this is an opportunity for us to enhance access, safe access to Lake Still to come across the bridge by thinking broadly about the Mount Tacoma Drive project and how it might impact Interlocken as it intersects and goes over the bridge. So it's a roundabout way of saying I agree with you, and maybe this is yet another possible bullet point because it's staring us in the face.
Well, you know, I, I certainly would say that would be another thing that to add in because I think that some of the people who are saying you don't need to restore the bridge to do what it's always been doing somewhat inadequately all along. That, 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 that it, it, it can be a non-motorized crossing, but, but constructed to where there's a little bit more room on the sides for people to be able to, to do some.
Actually walk.
It, it, there is, uh, there is a, uh, it's, it's like a lot of places that once people are there, they, there may be interesting things they can do, but where are they going to park? You know, and then, and that, that'd be, that'd be the evaluation. The evaluation piece is a topic. But we also got places that, you know, it's, it's, there are people who can walk the things and, 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 and would do that and, and go on. And it should be a photo site and things to do that. So I, I think fix the bridge, but then decide exactly what, what uses you want to allow or, uh, or, or fall under the umbrella of is it, is it, is it an amenity that can be allowed for increased access?
Yep.
Accessibility to it.
Mr. Laura Sella?
Just, I wanted to amend my last statement. Uh, when I said parks and lakes, I think instead parks and water, because I want to include Chambers Creek Canyon and the trail system that we're partnering with University Place on.
Big brand opening on that this coming week, Friday. Oh, that's right, Friday, what time? I think it's at noon, eleven or noon. I'll tell you for sure.
I agree with that. A general, a more general statement followed by Edgewater Park Master Plan, Chambers Creek Development Park, although the trail I think is the last, might be one of the last things we do in there. But just a, a, a more general comment, uh, because, because eventually I think in this next few years, we're going to be dealing with the first street ends
Yep.
under our, our new, our new twenty-five year plan. So I think you can mention that underneath if you wanted to, those kind of things, but if you just put in there in general, you know, we're going to improve, our, our goal is to improve access to bodies of water. I think that'll make the point.
Helpful. Mr. Coffield?
Just can I provide some feedback?
Yep.
So you have several projects that are already in the queue that I would recommend not be included in here, including Chambers Creek Canyon, American Lake Park and Wards Lake Park.
They're about done.
Those are already moving forward. You have funded them in one level or another, and they'll be well under construction or, you know, later this year, certainly into twenty-twenty-five. If you want it, we can add them, just add them, but again, it's not a new goal. It's something you've already established as a goal that we're moving forward on.
Would you be okay doing the specific goals?
So, yeah, yeah, so, um, so
Want to clear up confusion. Wards Lake and the American Lake Projects are not expansion. And, and for me, that's just going back to what we already have and improving the restrooms is not the point of this. So, so I do want to let's clear that up right now because talking about Wards Lake, talking about Wahop, talking about and anything else, going back to American Lake Park and improving act is not expansion, and that's what I want this to be about.
So, so building upon that, you know, really, if you, if you wanted to like a lakes access goal, it's really Edgewater Park. It's Camp Murray Boat Launch.
Yep.
It's the street ends. You've given policy direction on
One of them.
all, all of those items. You know, the last item, Interlocken Bridge, that's a standalone, my suggestion there is that that's a standalone initiative. I would not mix that up with a transportation project that you've already approved because that's not an engine, I mean, it's an engineering issue, but that's a standalone, that's a standalone project unto itself.
Okay.
And so those would be, oh my God, I'm missing it, and Gravelly Lake, you know, you never know what pops up in Gravelly Lake, though that's a part of the street ends as well.
Right.
So, so tho- that's what I would suggest be formulated around this, this goal here.
Makes sense to me. You good with that, Mr. Bokey? Mr. Laura Sella, you good with that? Folks, Deputy Mayor, good?
The facilitator, he says, what I hear you all saying is you want to elevate it to be a bit more general and it to not encompass existing access or parks that are in play, but look at expansion. I heard lots of head nods and then
Right.
a potential work strategy, set of strategies that would identify those. And I sense in this, you didn't really say it, but it also be nimble enough of something, some opportunity created or became, came around that you, you're already talking to yourselves and the community that we would take, make every effort to take advantage of that opportunity if it came along. So that's what I see in that discussion.
Agreed.
I, I will just add, this is very aggressive as well, you know, and I, and I compare that to everything else that's going on. So I just want to manage expectations in terms of bringing back a timeline on this.
Yeah, and I think the timeline's helpful because we know the low hanging fruit is Edgewater Park, right? We've got, for all the reasons we've discussed in previous sessions, that's got the focus priority.
And, and again, keeping kind of to our, so hopefully some of your outward touchstones is that, that, that what would come forward to you is a work plan, if you will, or what I call the bullets. Me as, as a work plan, ideally would be within existing resources.
Yep.
So that, I, I suppose that goes unsaid, but in some jurisdictions, you know, you, you have goals that do out, outdistance your resources and then you strive to get resources to do it. I'm not hearing that here.
Right.
But just in terms of continuity of, of connecting budget, doability.
We've been trained not to not worry about the money, we're told. Just dream big and he'll make it happen. Dream big. Exactly. All right. Well, let's move on to Goal Four, the downtown and Lakewood Station District Suburban Revitalization.
Yeah, we can't do this.
Yeah, can't do that?
We can't do that one. So we can stop at three. I'm joking, I'm joking, man.
That's right. We have to put the bridge in there before four, I guess. Yeah. Take a look at the goal. Remote redevelopment incentives underutilized spaces in key growth areas. Sure, and our vision is met for sustainable and vibrant urban growth promotes and supports dynamic and robust local economy.
Mayor, can I just ask, add a comment as you're evaluating this? So we have new leadership that has come into the community and Economic Development Department at both the director level and the division level. And I can tell you that we'll be coming back, I don't know exactly what we'll be bringing back in twenty-five and into twenty-six, but they've already initiated a full comprehensive review of everything that is your code. And there are things that are jumping out at them. I mentioned the coordination of our critical areas ordinance and our shoreline master plan. Um, you know, there's just one example, but this is something that as they're currently evaluating projects that are in the queue right now, then you can expect a pretty aggressive feedback on, on, on your code as you look out into twenty-five, twenty-six. So just for background information.
Well, opened up for conversation. To me, the goal articulates what we discussed at the retreat. I think it's broad enough to provide direction to the manager, but yet specific enough with the action strategies articulated here that it, uh, in my mind, will meet the goal. And I know we're going through the comprehensive plan update this year, so I, I, I'm sure that this same sort of language is part and parcel to the update, so it's consistent.
So let me clarify my previous comments. So yes, you're going through a comp plan amendment process. That's well underway. But what I'm saying is that even after the, the comp plan But what I'm saying is that even after the, the comp plan. Our, our new folks are taking a look at that as well, based on the stuff that we haven't been able to get to yet.
Any thoughts on this particular one, Mr. Brandstetter?
No, I think it's, it's, it's something that, that, that we need to do and it's something that we need to do. On an ongoing basis, you know, and, 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 and. We're not sitting here right now to sort of say that we know exactly what it is that it'll take to make this happen, but we should. Putting it as a goal commits us to seeking. What it will take. I will say this is kind of in. Opposition somewhat to the recent action that we took. To deciding to only review and evaluate the downtown some area plan every five years. After, after, after twenty twenty-four, you know, where, where, where we originally were going to do it every two years and then we. Got a recommendation from the planning commission that it, that only needed to be done every five years. Um, and here we're saying. We need to do it with some urgency and maybe more ongoing, so we may want to. Look as this year's comp plan cycle comes in and one of the things that's going to come in is the. Is the two-year review of the downtown area plan and, and, and we may want to revisit. Whether the next review by the planning commission is. It is going to be, uh, in twenty twenty-six or whether it's going to be in twenty twenty-nine.
Agreed. I think this is well stated, though, for what we need out of this goal. Anybody else with comments or tweaks on that? I think we probably said it well on this one. Well, good. I don't think we need to go through the notes per se, uh, unless you all think we need to, but I think, I think we've got. Everything covered in the four goals that we've discussed tonight. Am I missing anything?
I don't think you're, well, I don't know if you're missing the content yours, but from my perspective, I'm really excited for you that you have four. Distinct areas. You're, I think you're going to find it energizing to have that focus and to watch. These things happen. Um, and so I'm just, for you, I'm just very happy to see that and. There's also consistency ac- across these. They're interrelated in ways that they depend on each other. I think in those terms, it's. It's pretty cool that way. So, um. Uh, again, I'd urge you to look at the bullets as the, the leadership team's representation of what work plans would look like in this area. Recognizing that that may ebb and flow in terms of it. The one area that is, um. Less in your control than any of the others is public safety. Something could be happening tomorrow that we don't know about and all of a sudden, here we go. And so a locked and loaded position on this is the benchmark and we didn't make it. When something idiosyncratic occurs and they happen, it happens all the time in our country, in our society. We have primarily a reactive approach to public safety in a traditional sense. So. You're one step behind. It, we, it's been designed that way. That said, your broad approach to that, I think, is really going to do energize some of these other goals that you have as well. One of the biggest determinants of safety in a community is the occupation of public spaces. By law-abiding, happy citizens. So the more spaces you have like that, where they are there. And own these spaces, it's the number one factor that would reduce crime. And so when I look at your goals. You're all about that. You're about building this, this new area and developing it, all these parks and all of that. So I'm pretty excited for you. I really am. Cool.
If you can find us fifty to seventy-five million dollars, we'll be even more excited, Michael, so. Yeah, exactly. Printing money would be a good thing. Mr. Coffield, anything else for tonight? That was the item for discussion. We appreciate your fine work with Mr. Vargas and. Mr. Pendleton. Oh, Mr. Brandstetter has a follow-up.
But, 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 but I, but I did want to confirm that we would do. One more study session with some, some refinements before we, we put it on a regular agenda for adoption.
Absolutely. And for the specific portion on public safety, it might be kind of nice to have the chief and the assistant chief here to. Have a conversation, so that would be helpful. Good. Okay. Well, if that's it, Mr. Coffield, any other updates by the city manager for tonight?
Um, just a couple, if, if, if I might, um, want to let you know, next Monday at your council meeting, we'll have a report on you. For you regarding a path forward and some options and a recommendation regarding Interlocken Bridge. Also want to let you know that we have identified a funding source through our vehicle license fees. You know, we were expected to issue some more. Bonds this year, but we can actually put that off for a year, just given where our project's cash flow is. That then frees up that money that can then be, uh, and Tyler will have to work her magic, which can then be. Used to free up funding in with some general government dollars that can then be used to address the Interlocken Bridge. And, um, and so, uh, we've identified eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to do that. So, um. We'll have that for you, um, next Monday. Meanwhile, we have moved forward with. Um, applying through the Department of Fish and Wildlife, our hydraulic project approval of HBA permit. To be able to work above the water and we hope to have that approved in maybe even the next thirty days. So then we'll be able to. Um, move forward with making the improvements once we get some consensus from council. On which of the options, um, to move forward with, um, next week. And then. Based on those, you know, we do believe that we can be open by September thirtieth, if not. If not sooner. And, you know, a lot of times it's going to be like the lumber, we got to order the lumber. That's going to be sent off to Oregon to be treated. Then it's going to come back here, then it's going to be installed. So, um. But, uh, we, we're kind of in a perfect window right now to be able to do this work. So. Um, also, uh, some good news on the federal front. And, uh, that the, um, uh, Congress marked up the NDAA last week. And our proposed language regarding the North Clear Zone was included in there to, um, have the army kind of, you know, jumpstart. Um, and help better facilitate the acquisition of property over in that area. So I want to thank, uh, Congresswoman Strickland for, um, really pushing that, but also of course our two US senators, Senator Cantwell and Senator Murray. Um, which is now where it's headed to. So, um, but, um, if you do run into Congresswoman Strickland. Please do say thank you if you see her around. This was, this was a big deal, big, big deal. Also, um, Jake Johnson, our federal lobbyist, we were talking last week. And he has reached out to our federal delegation to make a phone call to US Department of Transportation Secretary. His office, um, in support of our request for the one point one million dollar raise grant. So it's kind of like the right timing. And so get in his ear, get in his staff's ear, and then hopefully, you know, we'll get some good news here at the end of June that. We've been awarded that grant. So no guarantee. Uh, it's a very, very competitive process. But, um, again, we're, 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 we're doing, doing our part. And then as it relates to your, to your calendar. Um, I'll just, uh, raise again, uh, Councilmember Pearson is looking for somebody to go to the. PSRC General Assembly on, uh, on, on, on Thursday morning. So I didn't know if there's anybody. I don't know, Councilmember, do you get anybody to go?
You have to do it in person?
Yeah, it's in person. Yeah, that's. Yeah. So, and by the way, um, I've suggested in the past. That like they rotated King County one year, Pierce County another year, Snohomish County another year, and Kitsap County. And I also want to tell you a number of years ago, those three other counties got together and suggested that that. And it's still being held in downtown Seattle in King County on a Thursday morning. So just saying. So, I'm sorry, you're going to get me off on a rant now on the future sound regional council. Um, uh, Mayor mentioned earlier this Friday afternoon from one to two, the ribbon cutting on Chambers Creek Canyon. Phase two, um, project. Then this Saturday, a couple of thing, great things happening on Saturday. The first is the dedication of the. Dr. Claudia Thomas Legacy House, um, at ten AM over in the Tillicum neighborhood. And then later on in the afternoon from four to seven, the Saturday Street Festival, where our own distinguished mayor and others will be, um, judging the car show.
That's, uh.
That's Saturday. That's the Saturday. That's correct.
The four o'clock timeframe?
That's correct. And then, um, and then a week from today, as a matter of fact, a week from today, at Forest Silicon Park, our, uh, two thousand twenty-four Farmer's Market kicks off. From two to seven PM where it's kind of like a little mini summer fest in terms of attendance down there. So, um, with that, that's my report, Mayor.
Very good. On the Claudia Thomas House. Event on Saturday, I won't be at that because I've got back-to-back events on Saturday and Sunday, but. I will be at the car show thing later on that afternoon. So someone will want to make sure that they're at the Claudia Thomas thing. Very good. Council comments, Mr. Bokey. Let's start with you.
I just want to note, Mr. Mayor, that last year the deputy mayor. Was, uh, invited to judge at the car show and I think she did a very fine job.
I could invite her to do it again.
Lot of knowledge about cars of, of certain eras and so she. She set the bar very high, that's all I want to say.
I'm not trying to say anything about classic cars, are you?
So, thank you very much for putting all that together. I think it was a good synopsis of a, of a long day. Um, and, and, and it wasn't easy, so I hope we gave, uh, the staff a, a. A good template going forward on this, um, on our goals. Uh, all I would say is I got the shape meeting, eight thirty AM on Friday morning. And we are adopting the twenty twenty-five work plan. And the reason we had to do it on May thirty-first is it was because it was supposed to be done by June first or something. And so we had to technically get in front of it. And so Friday, the thirty-first, we will be on that. So that's. All that and I'm going to try to make it to all the other events. I'm really looking forward to dancing in the streets. So. It's always fun.
We're looking forward to seeing you dance in the streets. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I went to the youth summit on Saturday and that was a, a, a really good event. Um, lots of great young folks there. Um. You know, they, they were recruiting some more people to join the, the youth council. And so I hope that more. More of the, the young folks do, uh, join that. It's a great, uh, great organization and, um. You know, they're, they're doing a lot to help us. So, um, the other thing with that is I went and visited some of the. The booths back there and there was a number of, of, of booths that were really not Lakewood focused. And I know that we, we focus on Lakewood because it's Lakewood, but there, as far as. Finding help and resources for the youth and these other folks, there's a lot of places that are just outside of Lakewood. That I don't know if we do a good enough job promoting and kind of partnering and with and, and kind of saying, you know. Yeah, we have these resources in Lakewood, but there's also, you know, if you live on the north side of Lakewood, there's. Places in UP and Tacoma that might be closer for you than going all the way back down to the YMCA or something. So. Um, there was, uh, a number of different things that Tacoma Cultural, um, Center has some things. They have like a girls' only night. Um, the, one of the, one of the. People I was sitting at the table with said, oh, Crownless Kings is apparently a, a, a local organization I hadn't heard of before, but they do. Um, some basketball nights at the Tacoma or at the, uh, TCC. And a number of other events with, you know, for the youth. So there, there was a lot of, um. You know, I guess just things that I hadn't heard about before and would be good to share, uh, with, with folks. Um, one of the questions that I asked was about, you know, how, how are we doing as a city getting, you know. The word out there for our events and getting, staying in touch with folks. And they said that we do a great job, um. You know, getting the word out for all these huge events like Summer Fest and Fiesta de la Familia, these other, you know, kind of bigger events. But they said that, you know, the smaller events are awesome too. But there's not as many people, you know, showing up for them and, and they might, you know, get some more traction if we could. You know, come up with some different ways or creative ways of, um, you know, marketing them. So that's just a comment. Yeah. And then, yeah, I have P- PSRC this week. Um. Yeah, looking forward to attending the rest of the events this week. So that's it for me.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Lawrence Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I wanted to thank, uh, Mr. Pendleton for, uh, facilitating our, uh, retreat. I. I also really appreciate all of our fellow council members, uh, focus on collaboration and tackling it as a team instead of. Taking sides and being adversarial. I think we, we had differences in opinion in places and that made us all better by listening to it. So. I appreciate that. Uh, other than that, I'm really looking forward to the farmers market starting next week, uh, and I will be there.
Very good. Mr. Brandstetter.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, you know, I, I. I did really appreciate participating in the, uh, the, the youth summit, uh, that, that, that took place and. Uh, and I appreciated them. Seeking a good way to incorporate us into it, to be able to go and do that. And I appreciate, I, I appreciated that. And it went forward. I mean, the, the tables that I sat with, the people listened well, they were three minutes. If you'll see for all the people that sit out here that only get three minutes to say something. To be able to go and do that. And, and so it was, it was difficult to try to. Cut it down to just two minutes so that you could get some feedback from the students that were at your table to be able to go and do that. So, um, but, 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 but I, I think that format served to help us connect. That, um, you know, that it would be, uh, uh, a similar format of maybe a smaller event that we might be able to do. Earlier in the year to be able to go and do that. I, I, I got the impression that there were relatively few seniors there. And then most of the folks were, were, were underclassmen, um. Which is good because that'll, that'll, that'll carry forward into, into the new year. I, I hope to be able to go and do that. I, I, I do, do appreciate getting a copy of the letter that the city sent to, uh. Uh, the, 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 the city of Tacoma, because I've been going to those advisory committee meetings on the. Tide Flats Plan that has been for several, a couple of years now, we're, we're being through and it's in the midst of the. Of the, of the, of the EIS and it was, uh, so the, the letter is both something that is, I think, uh. Clearly states that we're, that, 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 that we are concerned about, particularly about the interests of. JBLM and national security as, as they work through that. And, um, something that I'll be able to. Have as a reference in the, a few future Zoom meetings that are, that I have to go to that. Um, tomorrow I'm going to be attending the University of Washington Tacoma has an annual. Um, event and workshop, uh, a- around affordable housing strategies. So I'm going to attend that tomorrow morning to be able to, uh, go and do that. And on Friday morning, I'm going to be attending the Pierce County Community Services and the Metropolitan Development Council. Are holding a community needs assessment. Um, community event that's going to be at the Environmental Services Building in University Place, uh, but I'm, I'm. I'm going to go to that. And, um, the, um. As we get to n- next Monday on the third. Um, I'm probably going to be joining you all, um, by Zoom. Cause I've got things to do and I'm just, I don't know that I'm going to get. Just, and I'm going to try to get you to just get back in town to be able to come in person to the meeting, but I'll, but I'll look to, to log in through the. It's through that to be able to go and do that. But that's, uh, and that's all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thanks for going to the Housing Summit. Look forward to hearing more about that. And then what shape comes up was for the work plan too, to kind of integrate together for sure. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to comment on the Arlington Project. I think that is some, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment on the Arlington Project. I think that is something that students do every year that is really heartwarming, and it keeps the legacy alive. So I appreciate that. The Youth Summit was a lot of fun. The time was too short. They had some questions. They really did want to know about how we got to where we are, why we do the things we do, how do we make decisions, and that. They asked some good questions. So hopefully, they'll do that again and give them more time, because we didn't get a chance to even go around the table and introduce themselves. So but it was great. I enjoyed it. Saturday, LMCC will have a booth at the Dance at the Street, so that would give me a chance to dance in the street, kind of get back to my youth. When we were younger, we used to get out on the street. We could stop the car in the middle of the street and dance. People would stop and wait till we got through. I wouldn't try that today. And the Dr. Claudia Thomas Legacy House, I do plan to attend that. And tomorrow night, I think it is on Saturday, I mean, Monday, that was awesome. And our mayor did a fantastic job and and welcoming the committee, the the community. And and I like the way you well, I don't know how to say it, but the way you included what happened at Purple Pop, at the at the Arlington Project, I like that was great, because people was like, oh, really? So so many so many things that happened in our city that is not noted to the public. So appreciate you did a great job. Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Great event. So just in terms of past activities. So last Tuesday, I had the mayor's coffee house that was focused on the comprehensive plan update. Tiffany Spirit did a good job, great job of presenting and putting the information together in a very succinct way, forty five minutes from beginning to end. And the beautiful thing is it allowed for an open mic sort of conversation on other topics of interest. I thought the audience was pretty well attended that night. I think that they were very respectful. I think they appreciated the information that Tiffany provided on where we are with the comprehensive plan update and the housing issues. And again, you know, it's a work in progress, but I think the more people that come to those, now we're getting a few more regulars, of course, but some new people, and they're feeling more comfortable having a conversation with one another, and certainly with those of us present. So it's it's that was a good event. So I appreciate doing that. And then we had the Arlington Project, as we've talked about. I think the students did a great job, and I was able to kind of tie that in to Lakewood and its focus on Memorial Day celebrations and the the art of remembrance in the eyes of youth. And so that was was good, too. Youth Summit, I echo the comments, it was well done. We just need to, and Mary Dodsworth knows, we talked to her about it, but we need to provide a little bit more time for that round robin. It's the right format. Just we need more time for for the whatever you want to call the musical chair type speed dating thing. I do recommend that next year, we consider having maybe an opening event kind of in the same sort of speed, not speed dating, but, you know, round robin rotation, where we bring in the new youth council for the year, we welcome them, we introduce them, we kind of ask them the question of what you hope to achieve from your participation in the youth council this year. And then at the end of the year, at the Youth Summit, we have kind of a follow up. How did the year go for you? Did you achieve what you hope to achieve? What what's your feedback for us? So a beginning in the end with the youth, I think, would be helpful. Memorial there's Memorial Day ceremonies went well. I was at Camp Lewis Cemetery on JBLM for the first part of the morning, and that was a well done event. And then I went to, of course, the Mountain View Cemetery and Memorial Garden Ceremony, which was incredibly well attended. I sat with Congresswoman Strickland, the deputy mayor, the other delegation leadership from Pierce County, our own Janie Hitchens. Chair Mello was there. And who else is there? Oh, Mari Lovett from the twenty eighth legislative district. So it was well attended, and it was a big audience. So it was a nice event. Glad to be there. This weekend, we've got lots of activities and events. So I will attend the festival in the street later that evening. I think it's four or five o'clock or whatever, four o'clock. What time do I have to judge the cars? Four o'clock? Five o'clock, something like that. So I made the mistake of signing up with a seventy two year old retired two star general to run this Rainier to Ruston thing. So I'm doing, I don't know, three or four legs of four miles each for that stupid thing. So if I come in a walker to the Dancing in the Street, that's that's what I'll do. Come and say, try to limp there by the time I'm done. But I'll be doing that. And then I think that's it for the weekend, other than my kid's graduation from high school on Sunday. After she placed at the state tournament, got six in both the sixteen hundred and thirty two hundred, so she was on the podium with medals in each event. It was a good weekend. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Yes, ma'am.
You know, you can judge the cars throughout.
Okay.
And then they tell you when they need to answer. But you walk through and talk to them.
Got it. I can walk to and talk through with my my walker. Yeah. Mr. Coffield.
Council meetings.
Ah, yes, thank you. So we broached the idea briefly of considering what other cities have done throughout our region, and that is potentially either consolidating a study session with a council meeting on one Monday to, in an effort to kind of reduce the four Mondays that are taken up, maybe down to three. I think that was the topic of the conversation, or maybe even something different.
You know, it's it's up to the council. You know, one thing to consider would be to actually have your study session in advance of both your regular meetings, so just two, but you could do that as well. And you know, the we could do some research for you in terms of what that would look like, what that would take. And there are some cities that that do do that. You know, the two that come to mind for me are Mill Creek, which has been doing it for years, as well as University Place. I believe Tacoma does it as well.
Right.
But but I guess I would just need some, you know, either consensus or direction from the council mayor.
Well, I think it's maybe, and I'll open it up in just a minute, but it may be something for a future study session for us to noodle over after we get some of the information. You know, the the comments I've heard a little bit are folks do like to have the separation to some extent between study session and council official meeting, because sometimes you want to ruminate over what you heard and what you discussed, and then you can have a maybe a more qualitative discussion. So it may be an opportunity for you and staff, as we approach this topic in a study session, to say in a combined evening, where you may have a study session at five o'clock with maybe a dinner or something. And then you have a follow on council meeting. Either those topics from the study session may be on the agenda, or maybe they are on the agenda for the next regular meeting, something like that. So you have that separation still, but at least you consolidate the time. So that may be something food for thought. So I'll just, we're not going to make any decisions on this tonight, but I just want to get a consensus if this is something of interest to direct the manager to put on a study session agenda for us to at least talk about in a more qualitative way. Mr. Bransiter.
I'm of the opinion that what we do now is not broken. Do that. And I wouldn't want to move in any direction that would shorten study sessions. I I think we we almost never finish a study session in two hours. So then trying to constrain them with into two hours, I think, would cause there to be less conversation and in in around issues to be able to go and do that. Although I do think that there are some items that we go over in study sessions that are destined for a consent agenda that maybe we don't need a study session on, and we and that we might take a look at futures at study session agendas and decide whether we really want that topic at a study session or not. But I I'm as far as the 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 alternate weeks of a meeting and a study session, it's worked well for me for a dozen years, and I I I'm not necessarily thinking that maybe change it.
Others, Mr. Laurella.
Yeah, I'm I'm interested in hearing the city staff's pros and cons that they can bring forward for it. But I feel like our sessions in general aren't lacking for content and material to get through in the time allotted. So I don't know how we would expect to get through those in less time with less sessions. So I'd like to hear what the city staff has to say in their recommendations.
Deputy Mayor, and then Mr. Pearson.
Okay. I appreciate that that thought. I do want to hear more of the discussion of it, but every Monday night is tough. And when we want to attract people to our council that is willing to be here and that can be here, that may be an avenue to incentivize more people. More more people that are engaged in the community than before, because that's what I hear a lot. You know, I know how you guys stay there every Monday night till ten, eleven o'clock at night. So if we can break it up to where it's different, then we may can get some more qualified people.
Very good, Mr. Pearson.
Yep. Yeah, I I agree. I think it'd be good to at least hear, you know, what some other folks are doing and and how it's working. I, you know, the comment was mentioned about two nights a week, some that seem or two nights a month, that seems a bit extreme, given what we go through in a month. But I think, you know, baby steps, maybe moving it down to three and seeing how we can move things around on on different agendas would be totally doable. So.
Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, yeah, I I think we should I'm I'm open to having staff show us what other folks are doing, what other cities are doing, especially other cities our size. Our our meetings and for, I think the deputy mayor hit the nail on the head, our 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 meetings are very long. There's actually been times we've used the fifth Monday a number of times. So that's changed in in recent years. But we've even had meetings on fifth Mondays. So I'm open to I'm open to discussing any number of 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 changes. If there's one month during the summer, we cut back on the number of of meetings or something like that, a July perhaps or something. I would note, you know, Tacoma is much larger, right? So I think they have committees.
Yeah.
Their study session is in the afternoon of their meeting, which starts at five. So essentially, that would mean any of us to work, you know, would under that setup. And I know staff's not suggesting that, but I'm just using that as an example. We'd all have to take, any of us who have jobs have to take that day off, right? So that doesn't work. But I'm I'm open to any any to taking a look at it. I mean, the city's been here twenty odd years. I'm a believer that traditions start, right, for good, good reasons, maybe. And then their traditions and they're held. And Lakewood has a tradition of very long council meetings. And and maybe it's, you know, the the first folks who got there, they had tons to do. They also maybe wanted more or less public input. I don't know. But I I think it's I'm open to looking at it.
Great. I think there's some consensus there. Take a look at it. I think it'll be a fruitful conversation. See what others can do. And, you know, it's all about being efficient for the public's trust, not short circuiting the conversations or the discussions, but being as efficient as we can. Because it's, you know, it's a lot of a lot of work that we all do. We we all come to council comments by articulating not just our attendance at the regular meetings, but our attendance at all the other meetings and events and promotions and speeches and, you know, all the other things that we do. And it's it's a lot, not that we didn't know to sign up for it. We did. But if we can make the meetings more efficient, I think that would be a good thing. So that's certainly a possibility. We can look at that, too. Yeah. Okay, if there's anything else. If not, we're